Good evening and welcome to the December 16, 2015 meeting of the Milton School Committee. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I just have one addition. Under Chair's report, we're just going to add be update on warrant committee meeting. So we'll give a quick update on that. Any other suggestions of adds or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, and without objection, we'll approve the agenda for this evening. Moore, do we have anyone for a citizen speak? No one for citizen speak, so we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you Chairman Zulis. First, I'd like to invite to the table, I think throughout the hallway, would you ask the football team to come in? Won't you join us at the table, our athletic director, football coach, and members of the team who are available tonight? Steve and Mr. McCarthy and the other coaches. So it's the practice to invite teams that have gone to tournament play to come for the school committee and the public, to congratulate, recognize you, and for you to tell the story. So we couldn't be more pleased or more proud. Every time I see your coach, I told a story yesterday, I felt like I should bow to him and to the, symbolically to the whole team for the work that each one of you student athletes performed and the athletic and the ability you demonstrated and where you brought your team, your school, and your town. And on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, to both our athletic director, Alex Campia, who's with us tonight, and our football coach, Steve Dembowski, we want to congratulate you and have you talk about the season, maybe some of our student athletes, and then the school committee will ask you questions. If you're comfortable with that? Welcome.
At this point in time, I'd ask Steve to just introduce his players that are here. Some athletes are competing. I went to sports, pardon my voice right now. But not only did they play well, they played the game the right way, they did a great job representing themselves, their families, and certainly our school community. So they did a great job. The success they had was not by accident. It was by a lot of hard work and design by Coach Dombrowski, so they did a great job.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having us. You know, it's certainly been a whirlwind for me, particularly coming here and the warm welcome that we got, the support that you gave us in the school system, the improvements to our equipment and things like that. But the kids really deserve the majority of the credit, along with the coaches that, you know, that coached them. We had nine coaches this year, and we had about 96 players in all three of our teams. And some of them are here tonight. A lot of them are playing other sports for Milton, which we think is great as well, so they're not able to be here. Our season really was a learning curve for me as well as it was for them. And throughout the year, it started with an offensive explosion in the first half of the first game that I think kind of probably shook the town up a little bit, based upon our scoring history in the past. And then our defense carried us for a little while, and then we really relied on some just great teamwork down the stretch. And the league game at Wellesley, where we won the Harrogate League championship, was kind of more to my style, where we were behind in the fourth quarter, and we rallied down the field and scored the winning points, and then made the stop to win the game. And to see the outpouring of support from the community, along with the school, and also the student body that came to the game, and probably had more people in the stands at Wellesley than Wellesley did, which was really rewarding to me. But it was really great for these young guys and the coaches that put in the work to get us there. And then, being the first seed in Division III Southwest, we were able to, you know, have those three games at home, which was, I think, a real nice time of year for the community to come out. And two of those games were decent weather too, so it wasn't too cold. And the support that we got in those games and from just the town was really overwhelming and very appreciated. And we were able to, you know, capture the sectional championship. And just came up a little bit short, you know, one play there or there in that final game against Dartmouth, and we would have been at Gillette, which really was within reach. But we had a great senior class. Most of these guys here, actually all of these guys here are coming back, except for Mike and Scott. And we're hoping that we can build off of this. And we're also thrilled too that because of the success, we have had college recruiters pouring in and out of the building. The last week and a half, two weeks, you know, trying to get their hands on these guys. And we're, you know, thrilled that football will help with them academically, to hopefully gain admission to some better universities. So it's just been a blast, and thank you.
Coach, or Alex, could you list some of the, could you kind of list, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the championships and the firsts and some of the awards that you got as result of the year?
Sure.
To the extent that people don't know everything that you accomplished.
I think an undefeated regular season, even though it's only a seven-game regular season now, I think that's still probably a school first. I know that from the banners in the gym, our first Harrogate League championship in 52 years. I'm willing to bet probably all the money in my pocket that Mike Allen broke all of the single-season passing records here at Milton with 2,700 yards and 29 touchdown passes and completions and attempts and all that stuff, which is, you know, kind of, you know, status for the offense that we run and the excitement that's generated. But it all goes through the quarterback. So with that, he leads, as I told them today, actually, all of my successful quarterbacks are always all scholastic. So Mike made the Boston Globe, the Patriot Ledger, and the Boston Herald all scholastic team, which really is an accomplishment that represents the whole team. Along with Mike, at the Patriot Ledger, we had Akeem Smith, our senior inside linebacker, who's a three-year starter and really was the leader of our defense. And then we had the duo of the Perkins Brothers, David and Derek, which, you know, really exploded this year. Derek really early and David late, using the great speed that they also utilize for us in winter and outdoor track, to kind of, you know, just give us a scoring punch from anywhere on the field. And, you know, Mike was also the Bay State Harrogate Player of the Year as well. So, you know, we did really well with all that. And we had, along with those four guys, we also had Jack Clifford, another one of our captains, was a Bay State Harrogate All-Star, Devin N'Zapony, Matt Feeney, Omar Frazier, who's a junior who's coming back, was a Bay State All-Star. And so I want to make sure, we had nine. And Joe Quinn was honorable mention. So we had, oh, and Kendall Van Allen, who's, you know, one of our, you know, most favorite players and easy to recognize with a unique hairstyle. So he's also our top academic student athlete, and is being pursued by NASCAR schools and some of the upper Bay State, upper Division II schools as well due to his academic record. So, you know, right now, we're just trying to help the older guys find homes for next year, and then we'll probably after the new year, we'll get after the young guys.
Coach, do you want to introduce the people you have with you?
And just to add one more accolade, that Steve was Boston Globe Division III Coach of the Year as well.
Do you want to introduce some of the people you have with you here tonight?
Danny Flores, Eric Lundrigan, Matt Dunn, Owen Page, Coach Moore, and actually Coach McCarthy are here too. Here's the guy you can't miss, Kendall Van Allen, Scott Cummings, and Mike Fallon. They're the ones who either showed up later.
Number 67.
Number 67, my daughter Kate Dembowski, who's at the Glover School, who's usually the captain of the Mike Fallon fan club, but tonight decided to represent Jack Clifford. So we're, you know, we're just thrilled to be here too.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Walker?
So congratulations, Coach, on what I say is a perfectly executed plan. The offensive and defensive strategy that you put in place changed all of our lives. And to you young men, congratulations on execution. You can't win without both. You've got to have a great plan, and you've got to have great execution. And you guys demonstrated that. But I just want to focus on one thing. The coach said it. I was going to say it, but he said it first. This is our best season in 52 years. So to put that in some perspective, that's two generations. A generation is usually, a child is born, they grow up to be 25. They may have kids of their own, they grow up to be 25. In that 50-year period, we've never had a season as good as this. So think about that, and you have to be incredibly proud. And we're incredibly proud of all of you guys. So thanks very much for an outstanding season. I don't know what you guys do for an encore, but I'll be back next year.
Ms. Varela?
I just, I too just wanted to thank you all, Coach, and all the players, for just, I think, the wonderful example of, you know, great coaching, great team effort, and just all the great things you've done for the community. It was, as a spectator, school committee member, you know, there was so much pride everywhere you went throughout town, whether you were, I don't know, at the Milton Marketplace, or at some young kid's soccer game on the weekends. All anyone talked about was you guys. And it was just a really fun ride and a fun fall. And just want to thank you for that, for just a great Milton spirit. And even, even at my workplace, you know, it was funny, I work in town, and people would all of a sudden bring you up everywhere I went. Anyone, all they wanted to talk about was the Milton Wildcats football team. So, so thank you, and we look forward to next year with the groundwork that you've set. It's a lot of pride in the school. So thank you so much for that.
Dr. Donahue?
So I will echo my colleagues' praise for your execution on the field and your behavior and citizenship, both on the field and off the field. I will also say, so I work down in the Dartmouth area. And for the week leading up to your game, your team was discussed quite a bit in the workplace. So you're regionally famous. Building on the comments of Member Walker, you guys are going to be telling stories about the season for the next 50 years. So if you have any good stories that you'd like to share, I'd love to hear the first version of a particular game, a particular play, some particular part of the season that stands out in your mind. I'd love to be the first person that hears this version of the story. Any of the players?
Any volunteers?
I forget what you're doing.
Maybe you can give a microphone. Pass him the microphone.
I think it was the Norwood playoff game, and we were on offense. And, you know, we were all hyped. Just got a big stop on defense. And it was David, David Perkins. You know, we've never really had a big crowd for football. And David said, "Yo, guys, look at the crowd." And, you know, the whole huddle stopped. We all looked at, and it was like, you know, just so many people out cheering for us. And it was a pretty special moment. And also, I think, I don't know if it was that game, but David's jail screen for like 80 yards was like, I've never seen anybody run like that. Like, the way, I just thought that was amazing, honestly. He's a pretty special kid, so I thought that was pretty cool.
Just so that, you know, the jail screen is a plate. It's not...
You know, the story that I can share with you, you know, I think the Wellesley game, we were losing seven to nothing at the half, and we had not played particularly well on offense, and then failed to score at the one-yard line at the end of the half. And the players were all a little bit frustrated. And to top it off, you don't even get to go inside, you have to kind of go sit at the end of their track. And it's not a very good facility. And you get over there, and they were all a little bit grumpy, and you could see some bad body language and stuff like that. And I said to them, "Guys, relax. You know, we got these guys right where we want them," which is a line that I've used in the past when I feel like the players don't understand like how well they're playing, it was just the scoreboard hasn't reflected it yet. And, you know, they kind of laughed and smiled, and we went out and scored immediately, and then waited until the last minute and 29 seconds to take the lead. But they played a lot better in the second half. And the other story is as we were advancing in the playoffs, I had a conversation with Jack Martinelli, who was a Hall of Fame Milton athlete, who was the captain of the last team that won the Bay State Conference. And I called him and asked him about what he remembered about that time. And he reminded me that they won in '61, '62, and '63. So, and he was the senior captain in '63. But the game that clinched the league championship was played in December, because that was when JFK was assassinated. So they were actually in school, went to practice, and then were told to go home. And he said, when they were given that news, all the players before practice just stopped and cried. And said, "I don't think the players nowadays would stop and cry if the president is assassinated." And it's, you know, I think it just, it is truly a long time this past. And as I told them in the beginning of the year, I guess with the crystal ball, that, you know, the goal was to hang a banner in the gym for them, so that they would always be able to come back and have their spot. And they certainly accomplished that. So, you know, just a couple of good stories.
Thank you. Ms. Padere?
So, and I've been bugging Mary for many, many years. We've got to, you know, where I come from, Friday night football is like a religion. You know, everybody's there, Mary, nobody's at these games. This is ridiculous. We've got to get young families in and have them, you know, we can just feed them there. And she's always saying, you know, "Mr. Jett wants to know what we're going to do with all these kids at these football games," you know? And I said, "We could do this. We'll do cookouts, we'll do this and do that." And we, the first game, we'd have a lot of people, and it seemed to dwindle off. But I guess the real kicker is, you know, a winning season can do it all. You come to games if you have a really great season. So finally, a year where every single game was just packed, people couldn't move. And I have to tell you that, you know, my, I'll remember this season too, just because, you're right, we had nice weather, great team, winning team, but not just that, but exciting team to watch. But I still remember the play where your quarterback did some kind of pirouette move, where we, the whole crowd was, "Oh, oh," like with you every single moment of that play. I wish someone had taped that crowd watching you do that play, because everybody was in it. And then everybody who didn't even know each other was high-fiving the, throughout the whole, like a wave. So, you know, as Ms. Varela said, the whole crowd was into every game, every play. It's not like people were talking to each other. Everybody was watching. And it was just a really exciting season. And I think that you've built something that hopefully will last for a long time. And I think that there are little kids that were at these games, that are already thinking about playing Milton football, playing for their team, playing for their town. And that's what I've always wanted to see. So thank you all of you for doing that.
Just before Mr. Zulis closes, each of these student athletes and these coaches are committed to the Milton Public Schools and the town. And it's nice having the Colicott here tonight, and for these Colicott students to look and think and close their eyes and think, in how many years? Four years, five years? They can be a student athlete at Milton High School. And if James Jett were here tonight, what he'd say is, and to the public, "On top of being a student athlete, every one of you, to a person, is an unbelievable young man. And the way you represented your high school and your town, you have made us really, really proud." And Mr. Van Allen, to think that when we're asked to share a story, he doesn't tell a story about his own play. What does he tell a story about one of the Perkins boys, and how the Perkins, one of the Perkins twins looked out in what they saw. And that's what everyone tells a story. And this is an unusual high school, and with gifted and talented young men and women, and you exemplify the best of them. And before we close, this is the school committee meeting, but everybody thinks they're just meeting Coach Dombrowski and the Dombrowski family, and they go to the Glover, and his daughters and his wife are at the game. But I want to tell everyone a little secret. Coach Dombrowski has a famous father. And everybody thinks the first Dombrowski in the Milton Public Schools, walking through the halls and the children at the Glover. But Coach has a father, Henry Dombrowski, who along with John Collins, is probably the most successful and famous and the most effective teacher of writing in the United States. And I had the privilege as a teacher, and then as a principal, to work with Henry Dombrowski. And when Henry Dombrowski came into the town of Milton, we all stood taller, we paid more attention, and we all learned how to write creatively. And he was before his time. And you are your father's son, who I heard was at many a game. And your father made an impact before you, I have to tell you, in the Collins Writing Program in the Milton Public Schools. And if you believe in the circle of life, or as Jim, as Mr. Walker said, generations, I found it very, very moving to have you here, and we appreciate it. So to each and every one of you on behalf of the school district, thank you.
Just so you know too, Henry refuses to pay when he comes to games. He's still casting his legacy.
He does own a little part of the town. Even got here, he owned a part of the town.
Well, I'll just add very briefly, in the city of my origin, which is just down the road, high school football is a bit of a religion as well. And to the players, as has been pointed out, and I'm sure your coaches told you, I can tell you from personal experience that 30 years from now, more than 30 years from now, you're going to remember those feelings, you're going to have those memories, you're going to remember the sounds of those crowds when you ran out for the first time and played in front of the biggest crowd that you ever had. And you're going to have that your whole life. And you've given that to the rest of this town, so you'll be coming back and sharing those memories for years to come. So congratulations to you for that, and I'm very happy for you.
Thank you. So this is a special night tonight. In addition to recognizing the Milton High School football team, we have the Colicott Site Council with us tonight to present. Principal Holly Concanon, would you invite your Site Council to the table and make the introductions?
Thank you very much. Before they go, I just want to recognize that more than half of that team has had a presence at both Cunningham and Colicott Schools, has either volunteers in our after-school program, or in our Saturday programs and in our summer programs. So many of the children here probably already know most of the players here, and they've made an impact, not only on the field, but in our school. So it's wonderful to see them here. So thank you for having us. It's very exciting to follow the football team and to be in this room. This is our first time presenting here. And as a former technology coordinator, this is my dream. I was here this morning, and I met with Mike Lynch and looked at all the technology, which is, and there's even more behind the screens, that children get to use every day at the high school. And this is really exciting, and it's hopeful that our children will learn in this type of environment. So again, thank you. I'd like to introduce some of the members of the school Site Council that have come today, and also to recognize many of the families that have come to support us, not to present tonight, but just to be here. Most importantly, we have five children that are going to speak to you tonight, and they're going to start us off in the beginning, and then I'll send them home right after their part comes, because they probably have to get to bed soon. So I'd like to recognize the absence of a very important part of our team, Amy Gale, who is home recovering, very sick, but she played a huge part in our presentation and would have had a lot to say tonight if here. So I'd like to introduce, and I'll just call in order, and we can come on up and sit, and everybody has a little something to say to you. Maureen Driscoll, parent. And Maureen Driscoll has two of her children here who can come stand with me, if that's okay, Luke and Caroline. You can come stand right behind me. We have Gretchen Duffy, also a parent. Heidi Vaughn, a parent. And we also have Reagan Vaughn here with us, and she'll stand with me as well. We have a first grade teacher, Madame Baraz, who's here. As a parent, we have Madame Hamada, Ms. McDermott. In the audience tonight, we have Alan Lohan, grade five teacher. We also have Kelly Murtough, grade five teacher, who's come in support of our team. Margot Tansey, our community representative, will join us. And also Lauren McBride will join me at the table. And Lauren McBride is, we're lucky enough to have Lauren for a little over a year to do some work with us as an intern. And I feel very blessed to have Lauren spend some time with us. She brings a great deal of experience and is really helping us move our work forward. So this is just some of the team. And again, thank you to the, oh, did I, how could I forget, the Connors. Connor Nottington, Connor Mannion, come on up. Huge part of our student body. And they'll talk to you a little bit about our Colicott Code today, and one of the really amazing projects that Connor gave birth to this year. So we'll talk a little bit about that. So at the Colicott School, we have a mission. And, you know, I could read this to you, but I think I'll just sum it up in the words of my daughter, who's a first grader at Colicott. And I said, "I have to go to a meeting and talk about Colicott. What should I say?" And she said, "Well, tell them it's a great school, and the children are really happy, and they always do what they're supposed to do." So that's really all you need to know, and that's why we're here tonight. We have, I have been fortunate enough to walk into a school that has a very strong staff. Mrs. Sheehan has built an amazing school. She has hired amazing teachers, and she's provided professional development to really give a foundation that was wonderful to walk into. It is hard to walk into a place that is so well-established and to stay there, so the pressure is on. But I do appreciate all the support that you give to us on a daily basis. This year at the Colicott, we decided we needed a code. And so with the help of our adjustment counselor and our team chair, and many of our teachers, we came up with three things that we need to do. I could tell you about it, but I think I'd rather have the children tell you about it.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Driscoll, and I am in grade five. Tonight, we were happy to be here to tell you that Colicott is a wonderful place to be, because children and adults follow a code. The code is to be respectful, responsible, and hardworking.
Hello. My name is Luke Driscoll, and I am in grade three. Being respectful means that you follow the rules set to keep you safe and ready to learn. I show respect by listening to my teachers at all times.
Hello. My name is Reagan Vaughn, and I am in grade two. Being responsible means taking control over your actions. I am responsible when I make good decisions at lunch, recess, and during class time.
Hello. My name is Connor Mannion, and I am in grade five. Being hardworking means to persevere, look into the future, and never give up, even when things are hard. One example of hard work is the grade five newspaper. Tonight, we are proud to provide you with a copy of our first edition, completed and published during the grade five lunch and recess.
Hello. My name is Connor Nottington, and I am in grade five. I'm on a responsibility in class when I choose to listen and learn, rather than be distracted or distract others. Now please enjoy one minute of the Colicott Code in action. Now please enjoy one minute of the Collicott Code in Action.
Special thank you to Sarah Darty, our technology coordinator, for helping us put together that Anamoto. And I hope one day that she can give a workshop in this room to our teachers with these computers in this space. Again, we are a special place. We're a school of 681 children. We have students that range in age from three to about 11 years old, so we have preschoolers right up to grade five. We have students of all abilities. We're very lucky to have resources to support children of all abilities, and it's really an exciting place to be. So I thank you again for the experience to serve the school and the community in this way. Last year when we came to see you, we presented three goals. And our goals last year were to improve science, to improve literacy, and to support and develop the whole child. These were pretty lofty goals, and we feel very proud of the work that we've made towards accomplishing these goals. However, we still have work to do, so these will remain our goals for this year. And tonight, the theme of our agenda of our presentation will be strategies that worked, and then also strategies for continued success. With that, I'm going to ask Lauren to talk to you a little bit about a slide that we are very proud of. It presents a lot of hard work behind the scenes by all of our third, fourth, and fifth grade students, but also from every student and every teacher in the building. So with that, I'll let Lauren talk to you a little bit about what this slide means.
Hi. My name is Lauren McBride. I am a literacy specialist with the Greater Boston DSAC when I'm not interning with Holly, and am able to spend time at Collicott, which has actually been such, it's something that I look forward to, and I try to squeeze in in my busy schedule as much as I can, and I hope to continue to be there more, because what's happening at the school is really, truly amazing. As my, for my role as a literacy specialist throughout the greater Boston area, I look at a lot of data, and looking at this data is nothing less than amazing, and really something that all of the teachers and students and parents can really be proud of. As you can see, they continue to stay in their Level One status. Now they are, have actually moved into the 95th percentile. Also, as you look down with the all, between their subgroups of high needs, all students and students with disabilities, they continue to make progress and continuing to narrow that very small gap. And really and truly, once you are in Level One, being able to remain in Level One becomes very hard, because there's only so much growth, or so much narrowing that you can do. So to be able to see that they've hit, they've met their target across the board really is a testament to the hard work and the dedication of their staff. So I don't, kind of speaks for itself.
So again, something to be proud of, but something that will work very hard to sustain, and thank you for laying the groundwork. It is hard to sustain, but I believe that we do have the staff, the families, and the resources to do that. Before we continue with goal one, I do want to recognize that Principal John Redden is here, and he has played a huge part in the success of Collicott School. We are attached, as many of you know, and we share classrooms and we share families, and Jonathan and I plan on a daily basis, and we work to support each other. And thank you for being here tonight. And more importantly, thank you for getting that football signed for Tommy Mannion. We want to make sure Tommy has that before he goes home tonight. So again, I want to introduce two of our team members who will come to the table and talk to you a little bit about improving science. They'll tell you what worked, and also strategies to continue to make sure that we're successful.
Hi. I'm Lauren McDermott. I'm a grade three teacher at Collicott. And if we could go to the next slide. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about our science scores, and you know, we're pretty proud of our scores at Collicott School. And there has been, we've seen an increase in our scores. And if you look between 2014 and 2015, the percentage that, of students that are in advanced and proficient went from 66% to 76%. So that is a significant increase that we're pretty proud of. And it's also, you know, nice to see the needs improvement from 2014 to 2015, that we went from 32% needs improvement to 21% needs improvement, and that is a significant decrease, which is also really great to see. So you know, we're happy with the trend, and we're seeing our scores increase. And Fatima and I are going to talk about, you know, what we've put in place that has helped these scores, and what we need to continue to see growth.
I'm Fatima Buracelzay. I'm a first grade teacher at the Collicott. I would like to talk about the Collicott Outdoor Garden. As long as I'm in, I was in Milton, I remember parents talking about an outdoor garden, and we had some workshop and all that about that. But Collicott is very fortunate to have a great group of parents who had keep up with that idea and make it work. So although it started a few years ago, and rapidly, actually, they did grant and get all the material, the seed donation and hard work during the weekend, and also during the time when the children are in learning. So I wanted to talk about actually, one little incident that happened, and I didn't know why. But one time I had my first grader coming back from the recess, and they all had like some kind of vegetable roots and all kinds of things in their hands. And I said, "Someone's been digging somewhere, and they're going to get into trouble." But actually, I found that later on, that the day they did that, there was like a scavenger hunt, and it was offered to all the children who were in recess at the time. Regardless, they come from Collicott or Cunningham. Some parents and teachers came and just did something with them. And so I remember the children coming with those vegetables and all that, and just be so proud to find that. So I thought that was really the accomplishment of it. The other thing is that we, I know there is a plan to also have another area for the pre-K and the kindergarten somewhere in Collicott. And eventually, the ultimate goal of that will be to have, grow some vegetable and to be able to give it to the community for people who need it. So I think it will be a great project.
Another improvement that we made that has really worked in our school is we have added new science units, the FOS system. And new units last year were added to grades three, four, and five. Some new unit, a new unit actually for grade three again this year. And it's wonderful unit, wonderful units with really hands-on investigations that the students can complete with lots of chances to explore and investigate, and write about their thinking, and do scientific drawings and things. And we also, the teachers also had a great opportunity to attend professional development for every unit, every new unit that we received. And we were able to learn the curriculum, try out the materials and lessons, and actually also be the student and see, you know, how it is working with the materials, and trying to really figure things out for ourselves too, and how things work. And we were very lucky to have those opportunities of professional development, and it really has helped the teachers with their actual teaching of science. So we're very happy about that. And this year, it was added to grade two, and it's going to keep continuing.
And in January, actually, the second grade team is going to have their, learn about the new program, the science program from the FOS company. And also, we are translating the material in French.
So what also has worked in third grade, last year, we continued with the STEM Pathway for the English program. And in, last year in third grade, the creative computing, the Scratch program was introduced. And you know, a lot of teachers, myself included, were very nervous about it, because it's coding and something we're not, you know, a lot of us weren't 100% sure about. But we've, I have seen so much growth with the coding, and it's fascinating to see the kids, like they are creating and writing code within the classroom. And the projects that they create are extremely sophisticated, you know, there's animation, there's sound, there's, they just are fantastic at it, and they are learning from each other and building on projects each week. And what has continued and implemented this year in fourth grade is the Project Lead the Way. So the teachers and students are very excited about this new initiative and the additional science that they're getting each week.
So during the summer, I was very fortunate with more than 30 of my colleagues to take part of professional development about science notebooking that Milton has offered us. And we were, we had Professor Jeff Winnaker who came and told us about the benefit of science notebooking. And I think everybody's on board to think that we need to introduce more writing and more observing with our children from the very beginning, from first grade or even kindergarten up to whatever the time is for them to leave Collicott. Also, we have a great program coming every year, and it's very, the children are so enthusiastic about that. We have a gentleman called Michael, who comes from Deodabon. And I'm always amazed how he can make the children become trees, roots, branches, and acorns, and they're just so excited about that. So we enjoy very much that program is from K to four, and we thank you, the PTO, for that.
Another initiative that we are putting forth this year is Beyond the Bell Program. And this is for targeted groups, for kids who need maybe some more help or additional work within ELA and math. And that is, it's two hours a week, an hour focused on ELA and one for math. And the ELA materials are all science-based this year. So we're hoping that will, you know, help with the reading of science, and hopefully that will help some of our groups maybe go from needs improvement to proficient or advanced or so on. So we're excited to start that this year.
Two more initiatives we are doing in Collicott. One is actually the visit of the Museum of Science from kindergarten to second grade, and also our science fair. It used to be everybody together, and I think it's the best it happened to our students, is that actually now we do a science fair for kindergarten to second grade and third grade to fifth grade. And it's very popular, and they're just so excited about presenting a project.
And one more. One of the initiatives that was put in place was science from scientists, and that is in grade five. And real scientists come and teach lessons to the students. And you know, really, the teachers and the children are learning a great deal from these scientists. And you know, I see them in their lab coats, you know, walking through the school, and it's very exciting, and the kids are really enjoying it. And that is something we are very happy is continuing this year, and would like to see continue.
Thank you very much. And again, a special thank you to our science coordinator, Bernadette Moonen, who has been instrumental in supporting the teachers and also facilitating the professional development. She delivers insects and worms, and she's a one-woman show who really could use some help, but never complains, and really has made a difference in our, in our science instruction. So again, a lot of things have worked, and we do have strategies to continue to grow. I think a lot of the initiatives you heard of, you may not hear about tonight if they weren't funded by school committee votes, but also by our PTO and the Milton Foundation for Education. We're very lucky to have many of these resources and programs that many schools don't have, because they don't have the support and resources that we do. So our second goal, and I'll invite the people who would like to speak about literacy up to the table, I believe it's Heidi, and maybe Lauren can join me. And we're going to talk a little bit about our goal two, evidence of improved literacy. Come on up. So this slide, I believe that Amy Gale was going to talk about tonight, so I'll talk about it. Is that okay? And thank you to our children who came, and good night. So this slide here, we have organized for you our scores on the PRC assessment that just came out. Although English Language Arts, English Language Arts and Mathematics are listed here, we're going to focus on our literacy scores, because again, that was one of our goals. Do you want to talk about it, or should I summarize what's here? Okay. So you can see that in English Language Arts, in the Collicott, in grades three, four, and five, the first column summarizes our students who received a Level Four or Five. So these are new levels for us. We're just getting to understand the way PRC is reported. You might compare it to maybe proficient and advanced, as far as MCAS was concerned. But you can see that 77% in grades three and four, and 80% in grade five are performing at a Level Four or Five. This is an assessment, this is the first time children have taken assessment online. This is the first time children have had to synthesize information in fiction, nonfiction, and also by video. It was an aggressive test, but our children did very well. And so we're proud of our scores here. And again, it is an expectation that we will be higher than the state. I do think that's, you know, a low expectation for a school as rich as we are in resources and support. But I will state the obvious and just tell you that we are pretty high in comparison to the state. So this is just one piece of information to talk a little bit about what worked and how we know it worked.
So with the improvement of literacy outcomes and instructions, a lot of things are working at the Collicott School. So we've had an increase in reading specialist staff for grades one to three. And a lot of inclusion, and it's really exciting to have so many people support us. And as of June 2015, teachers from grade one to grade four have all been coached in Reader's Workshop practices. And this has been really very, this has been great, I can say it, because I do it every day, and it's, the kids love it. Also, comprehensive assessments of
Also, comprehensive assessments of students, grades K to three, we use Fanta's and Pennell. And equivalent for French is JB plus, beau chemin. And for grades four and five, we have these classic reading inventory. Also, there has been significant investment in the book room. At the Collicott School, it's in the teacher's room. And we see teachers coming in and out, taking books, bringing books back and using them for Reader's Workshop. They have many, many books in both fiction and nonfiction. Also, we've all had professional development time to support also inclusive literacy practices. All of this is working and we'd love to keep it.
So, the next slide is just a summary of our beginning of the year Fanta's and Pennell levels. Although this doesn't tell a true story of what's happening in our school right now, it does tell a story of what happened in the very beginning of the year. So, we collected data using assessments funded by you, thank you very much, in our reading initiative. And we took this information and we distributed our resources accordingly. That includes books, materials, professional development, and also the reading support teachers.
Hi, I'm Heidi Vaughn and I'm a parent. Excuse me. I think what you'll see when you look at this slide is that Holycott Canada and her team have really come up with a broad, kind of multifaceted approach to get to the goal of continuing to improve literacy. Sorry. So there's, they're targeting the students directly in the classroom. Also, outside of the classroom and outside of the school day, they're targeting the teachers and giving them the support they need to in turn, you know, give the students the support. And they're also investing in more resources for the classroom, for the students, and for the teachers. So just a few things to highlight with this slide. The first one, I, my understanding is that the continued reading support for identified readers in grades one through five, we should thank the, the school committee and its approval of the advancement budget. With those funds, Collicott was able to hire a reading specialist, a certified reading specialist, as well as implement the, the reading assessments for all students in grades one through five. The next one, the Beyond the Bell programming that was mentioned earlier. The Collicott was able to offer seats in the summer program held at Milton High School during the summer, with certified teachers at no cost to many students. And then the Saturday Scholars Program, the Collicott was also able to offer a discounted rate of $50 for all willing students. And in the, during that time, it wasn't just reading and writing, they could also do math, art, science, and gym, addressing, you know, the whole child, which will be talked about more later. The third bullet point up there, the targeted professional development this year, the Collicott hired two, well, I guess they had these two literacy consultants that they retained. Their names are Martha Winnaker and Margaret Burgess. And this year, they targeted the teachers of kindergarten and fifth grade so that they received the professional development that the other grades one through four had received in the past. Also, with help from those literacy consultants, this is the first year of implementing the writing to text, common assessments in grades three through five. And then you'll see the various ways below that they're building classroom libraries, again, thanks to the Milton Foundation for Education. Also, several successful donors choose projects funded online. And then, of course, parents in the community that might decide to gift a book in honor of their child's birthday or a special occasion. So we're grateful for the support from all those various sources. Continue to look at reading and writing as goals across all content areas. We mentioned the science journaling and the math, math journals and the science notebooking. And of course, we really enjoy a fruitful partnership with the Milton Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our third goal of supporting the whole child, as I told you, my six-year-old thinks it's important that you know that children are happy at Collicott and we think that's also important. And with the Collicott Code and with morning announcements and with expected behaviors constantly being explicitly taught to children, we are working on creating citizens that will be able to positively impact their school and our, our community. So, you know, we, we did put the code into action with the video. We have a few pictures here that highlight some of the experiences and it's so much more than our PARC scores and our ELA and our math scores. It's our art, it's our, you know, we see third graders reciting a poem every Friday. Ms. Kelly sends her third graders to me too, you remember? To recite a poem. And the public speaking skills that come out of these children are amazing. You know, we work on changing a mindset at Collicott School. When children think something is too hard, we give them tools to figure out how to make it easier for themselves. Here you have a, a picture of the Museum of Science, who, this was just this year, those are kindergartners actually touching real animals. And then, of course, Wally the Green Monster and a few local celebrities in the background who Wally just overtook that day. But there are a few more people in, in the back that you may notice. So all of these things do create a positive climate and when children are happy, they're available to learn. So, this is something that's very important to us. And so with that, I'd just like to invite a few more parents up to talk a little bit about what it means to support the whole child.
Hi, I'm Maureen Driscoll, parent at Collicott. And I wanted to start by saying, I think this is such a wonderful goal of supporting the whole child. And as a parent of four children at the Collicott School, I really wanna thank Holly and these teachers because I really think they set the tone that that's so important. And I know my kids go to school every day and they feel like what they have to say matters. And as a parent, that's such a gift. And I don't know if you get that everywhere, but I really think Holly believes that and I think she wakes up every day and thinks, how can I make these children feel successful and wanna come to school? And I think she instills that in these teachers that are here and as a parent, that's such a gift. So, I wanna thank them for that. But supporting the whole child, what worked, we have many successful approaches that we've had, including the implementation of the anti-bullying curriculum. We had many grants awarded to support social and emotional learning experiences. And as they talked about with the Collicott Code, the social and emotional learning theory and Common Language are part of the morning announcements. We continue development and integrate, integration of garden into schooltime activities. And we've had a wonderful Veterans Day celebration today that I know that, or this year that the kids all love. And also, the continuation of the CAS program, which offers a variety of choices of classes for the students after school.
Hi, I'm Margot Tansy and I'm the community representative. And our two children, Melissa and Jay, both went to Collicott School. And the school that they went to was just fabulous, just like it is now. And I'm gonna continue on with the evidence of supporting the whole child. Collicott has more clubs. Our new newspaper, which you are gonna really enjoy looking over, the ACE program, the garden club, and the recycling club. The focus on physical health, box, walk to school day, and teachers' involvement encourages the participation and makes it all fun. Leadership roles within the classroom, classroom discussions of literature related to socialization, PTO activities including One Book, One School, Family Resource Night, and science fairs. More positive playground experiences, which include new playground equipment, balls of all sorts, basketball hoop, increased playground staffing, including volunteers from Milton Academy, and buddy bench.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Duffy and I'm also a parent of a second grader and a fourth grader at Collicott. I've had the pleasure of being on the site council when a lot of these strategies and ideas were just ideas and have been able to watch how they've grown and how the children have, my own children personally have benefited, but also how the school has benefited. And as Holly said, happy children are ready to learn. I have a very spirited fourth grade girl and some of these playground activities and clubs have really given her a purpose on the playground. And the adventure night and a lot of these things really inspire these kids to wanna go to school every day and to wanna learn and be a part of something. Mrs. Caruso, who's the adjustment counselor, has worked tirelessly to, not only for the kids that might need help, but now she's implementing programs within the classroom. And the kids are coming home and they're learning languages about how to be kind to one another and to grab a kid on the buddy bench and to look around them and look around the playground and see who needs somebody to play with. And it's just a pleasure to send my children to school every day. So, continue doing what you're doing.
So, I am overwhelmed by the amount of support that I have with me tonight. I asked who would be available and everybody was, so that is just so significant to me. And also, the teachers who came just to support us, it really means a lot to me. And it's probably one of the reasons why we are where we are because we have an amazing team, families, children, and also the educators in the building. But that's, they're not the only people, I have to recognize the people who work in our cafeteria. I've never seen so many people really care about how the children feel, not only about the food they're being served, but the way they feel while they're eating it. I've never seen so many children eat kale as this year because our cafeteria staff has introduced the kale challenge, which the children love to take and they like kale. So, thank you to them. And also, you know, just everybody who, who works at the school, there is an expectation of greatness and people who come to work wanna be there. So again, we got here because we've had support from you. The advancement initiatives are not in vain, they are making a difference. And I can't thank you enough as a parent, as a former coordinator, as a principal, and as a community member. Our children are so lucky to have these public schools. The leadership team, we are not on an island. Again, John Redd and I work very well together every day, but with the help of the coordinators who spend time in our building and then also the support from our weekly leadership meetings and the principals and coordinators meetings, they're, they're very meaningful and, and they help us grow. We have an amazing PTO, both at Cunningham and Collicott, who coordinate to support both schools at the same time. We have what we need and we ask for what we need and we usually get what we need because we have an amazing support system in them. Again, the entire staff, including all of the teams, like the school site council, we have a diversity committee. And then we also have these informal teams that are just sort of happening. They're the teachers who give up their lunch and recess to coordinate things like our newspaper club or our volunteer club. Every fifth grader at Collicott School as of January will have some sort of volunteer job during one of their lunch or recesses. And they've signed up for them, they've asked for them, and teachers are providing experiences for children to volunteer and feel part of the community. The Milton Foundation for Education has given us everything that we've asked for. Our staff has written many grants and I know in the busy day of a teacher, to find an extra hour or two to write a grant is not easy to do, but our teachers have given up time, they've wrote, they've written thoughtful grants and they have been funded. The families are amazing, if you see the amount of people who come to pick up and drop off or to donate presents or to donate food or to bring it to the food pantry or whatever we need, there's, there's a parent for everything. So, although I can't represent everybody here tonight, it's amazing to see the many different faces and the jobs that they do. We are living in a very scary time right now and every day on the news, there's something new to be terrified about. But I am very, very grateful and I have to recognize the partnership that we have with the Milton Police and the Fire Department. I feel very safe in our schools, I feel very supported. We've had great training and your children are safe because of the partnership that we have and the training that we've received from Milton Police and Fire. And again, Donors Choose was spoken about a few times and, and again, that, these grants couldn't have been granted if the teachers didn't take time to write them and then also if the community members didn't take time to grant them. So, again, I think there are many things that have led to the success of Collicott School and we will continue to work hard to stay successful. And thank you.
So, I guess, it's questions? Is there someone with questions? Ms. Bedare.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Just spinning here. Um, just some-
I know Amy Gale is watching, I just doesn't feel the same without her. Without her.
You know what, soon, soon this room will have the capabilities where we can reach her. So, just some clarification, on the first, the accountability data, because I, I'm just a, just trying to clarify because your kids didn't, the, the elementary kids did not take the MCAS last year, right?
So this, this slide, it encompasses the data of the PARC scores for our grade three, four, and five students. In the elementary school last year, the only children who took the MCAS were the fifth graders.
The fifth grader-
PARC does not have a science assessment. So, this encompasses all of the assessments that we took. But again, PARC is, PARC was English Language Arts and Mathematics.
Right. So, when they talk about narrowing gaps, though, they're two different tests. So, they just hold us steady then on those? Or is it just, I, I'm just, just unclear on the way this chart is versus, charts in the past look like this, but they're comparing two different tests? Do you know what I mean?
Where you're gonna call a resident expert? It's a really good question and it's something that the state, that many people have asked across the state this year. So this year, it is a transitional accountability and so what they did, and I'm hoping that I articulate this the right way, but they basically have baseline data that encompasses MCAS, it's a subgroup of MCAS as well as PARC districts.
Okay.
And then, so there is a transitional CPI and PPI this year that were put into place. So this accountability is, is in fact across the state, but it's, it's a transitional year and there's a, a crazy formula that I wish I understood. But basically, it's two different cohorts of groups of students from across the state that took both MCAS and PARC.
Okay, gotcha.
And then they combine them to be able to have the baseline data of which then to use, to be able to determine accountability across the Commonwealth.
Okay, so it is somewhat, it's not our groups as we've had in the past comparing our groups, it's kind of using a formula to group, compare two groups that took MCAS and then took the PARC. I'm following you, all right.
And before you leave that accountability data, Lauren might want to further speak to this, but no school or district that took PARC, we were held harmless. But based on the data, the Collicott remained a level one school in the accountability levels. And Milton High School became a level one school from a level two to a level one this year and the remaining schools remained level two schools. But that is excellent data and again, it wasn't just held harmless, it, the data supported that the Collicott remained a level one school.
Which is great. And I wanted to clarify that because I think that that's, I mean, your, Collicott's data is always really good. So, the other thing I was gonna mention, I have two questions. Number one, I need to know what the kale challenge is.
You just eat kale.
You just eat kale, okay, it's nothing so exciting formula.
And most children find out that they-
They like kale? So they challenge themselves to eat it and then decide if they like it?
Right, and it's actually cooked in a way that is just perfection. They, they taste like chips.
Perfect.
Kale chips.
All right. And then, I need to know what the buddy bench is.
Sure. So the buddy bench is, it's actually a grant that I wrote with Elizabeth Caruso. The two of us submitted it last year and it, we submitted it to the Milton Foundation for Education. And it sounded like a, a very expensive bench to put out in the recess yard. And I know there was some talk at the table about whether or not to fund it and I can't say how grateful I am that it was funded because it has changed recess experiences. So with the buddy bench came whole school lessons about how to use the buddy bench. And basically, if you're at recess and maybe you need a break from your current friends or maybe you're not really getting along with your current friends, you have a seat on the buddy bench and someone else will come along and ask you to play. So if you don't know how to enter a, a new situation with new people, you don't have to because someone's going to come invite you. And the only rule is that you can't say no. So, it's a great way for children who need help to find new friends and it's a great way for children who don't need help to find new friends. Again, Mrs. Caruso pushed into all the classrooms and taught children about social expectations and appropriate language to use. And I was nervous about it, I was nervous about how children would perceive someone who sat on the buddy bench. And I think there's talk of people who don't understand how it works that, you know, why would anyone sit on the buddy bench? Then you look like that child who has no friends and people will be embarrassed. And actually, we're finding out that it's the exact opposite. It's a vehicle for children of all experiences to meet- It's a vehicle for children of all experiences to meet new people and to find new friends. So, it's basically a bench that sits in the middle of our recess yard and the Cunningham and Collicott children use it. Both adjustment counselors work well together and have planned lessons together to support children. So, what we're seeing is that it's just a vehicle for people to make new friends if there's a problem or to make new friends if they just want new friends.
That's fantastic.
And before you leave that, I promise I'll stop. The virtue of the Milton Foundation for Education bases, their whole basis and philosophy are these mini grants responding to the teachers' needs. And the exciting part is, successful grants are replicated in other schools and so other schools are replicating the Buddy Bench. I see Jonathan Redden last year with the diversity series and now it's being replicated in the other schools. So, the Milton Foundation's goal is to take the Buddy Bench and initiate it by schools, not just to send the Buddy Bench to the other schools, but if they initiate it and they know one of their initial grants was successful, they want to replicate the model in other schools. So, that is one of the grants that is being replicated.
That's wonderful news and I can't stress enough the importance of the lessons that go along with it. If it wasn't for the adjustment counselors being so vigilant about ways to use it and appropriate language to use, then it could just be a bench.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that the idea of it is just fantastic, but I love the idea that your teacher, Ms. Caruso, is teaching these lessons inside. And is she using a curriculum or is this something that she has developed or?
So, I have to say, she was a new hire last year and she comes with years of experience in other places. And she comes with a lot of experience and a lot of materials, but she has really taken to the grant writing scene and she knows what she wants and she's getting it through MFE and also through Donors Choose. So, she's received many picture books and she also is using a lot of work from Marcia Garcia Wiener. And so, she's using many different resources of her own experience and her own research. She's also working with the team to implement a district-wide program.
Yeah, I was going to say, if her, I mean, if, what she's doing is working, I see no reason why we shouldn't, you know, implement it at other schools that are open to that. So, that was that Kale Challenge. And then, I was going to say to you that, that if I was a principal and a parent came up and said what was your school said about me, I would just be, that would make, that you must be doing the best job that you've ever done.
Very humble.
I mean, that is, and I saw you reacting to it, so I know you felt that way, but, you know, the Collicott is just, I don't, I, I think this about a lot of our schools, but when you come up and you hear all this, it really is a community and it's a school, but it's a community and it's so great, you know, that you have all that support and that you appreciate it, but that support has come to you for some very good things that you're doing. And so, you guys are all doing a great job and it's just a really impressive presentation.
Ms. Varell.
I too want to say how impressed I was by the entire presentation. And it's just so much, it's just so nice for me because most of you know that I am a former Collicott parent. And when I see the school in action now and I know how happy, I still do know some Collicott parents that are there even though we're up at Pierce and the high school now, but I hear such wonderful things about you Holly and the continued staff. Many of the teachers that my guys had, Dom Bros, Dom Hamada, and Slohan are here. And it was, it was a special place then and it's continuing to grow, all these new initiatives of the garden and the fact that you still continue One Book One School and to Ms. Padere's, you know, notation about this Buddy Bench, it is a special place and it's just so nice. I want to commend the current parents that you're continuing to be such a supportive group because I, I really do feel that a school is only as good as its administration and its parents, though. The PTO and the parents can help make or break a school and I'm sure that Ms. Concanon would agree with that. And when I think back, Grace here, my daughter who's a student rep, she started at the 1909 wing in first grade. Madame Bres, do we remember that? Down in the dungeon.
It's her first year.
The nineteen, yeah, and Madame Segal and Madame Bres next door to one another. And when I think that even then, that what a wonderful experience you guys made for the first grade and it was not easy back then, down in the dungeon as I call it, in the basement. And then, how exciting it was in second grade when the school opened and the beautifulness of the new buildings and even for someone like Grace, and you can speak to that, what it was like to have to go from that to the beautiful school that Collicott was and then continues to be and to see you all here today, it's just very heartwarming and the success both academically, like you say, through all your testing, but again, to speak to the whole child and the community there. I do miss Collicott, I really do. It brings back memories hearing you speak about everything today. So, thank you for a great presentation and thanks for all your continued effort for such a great school. I love them all, but I have a special place in my heart for you guys.
Ms. Varell.
Thank you, oh, thank you for coming and presenting to us. This was really nice for me especially because I am a proud Collicott graduate of 2011. And I remember seeing all the amazing things that you're doing, especially with the whole child and providing all these after-school activities and things like that. I think that's great to start in elementary school because once they do get up to Pierce and the high school, like, we have so many options here as well, so I think that's great. And it's really nice to see like, a school that I have, it's been like five years since I've been back, it's just wonderful to see that, a place that was so special to me and a bunch of my friends as well, to be in such a great like environment. It seems all the hard work you're doing is paying off, so, thank you.
Dr. Dunning.
Well done. Congratulations. You should revel in the data because it is excellent and your scores have done tremendously and all the hard work really shows. So, congratulations. I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments. I'm going to go through them in the order of the presentation, I think, so. My first question is about this slide, so it's great that it's up. So, there are several categories where there are not data bars. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, so, every school is a little bit different and unique in the population. This represents our grade three, four, and five students from last year and the students who participated in our assessments. In order to have a blue line, you need to have a subgroup of at least 30 children. So, again, we, although we may not have a line right now for Asian students, that means we don't have 30 who participated in this test. We may have 30 in the school, but we don't have 30 who participated in the assessments taken here. So, it takes at least 30 children to have a blue line. That doesn't mean that these children are absent from our school. We have a representation, I think, of almost every one of those subgroups, but we don't have enough to have a blue line. We do know who those students are, we do know how they've performed, but we don't have enough data as a school to have a blue line. We have enough as a district, but not as a school.
Perfect, thank you. And I presume-
And maybe before you leave that note, I just want to say that when we join all the elementary schools together, so, that group doesn't have an African, American, Black group, that's 30. But then, when we look at the data district-wide, all of the children in that category. So, we look at data for the whole district at that grade and we do our data meetings and we meet quarterly with the principals and the coordinators, we examine every child in every subgroup and go over the data for every one of those children.
Excellent. And I think, I think that's important, too, because you don't want to get into a situation where you're, you're making decisions and you're having conversations about a number that isn't statistically significant because then, you know, it's, you're sort of talking around an issue that may or may not actually be an issue. So, thank you, thank you for clarifying that. My second point was on the next slide, if you wouldn't mind advancing. So, I wanted to say congratulations on your growth, on your growth, not only of the advanced and proficient put together, but it also, it seems as though your advanced students have been relatively stable across the past four years, but a lot of that growth seemed to come from moving students from the needs improvement category into the proficient category, so, well done. My specific question was, is that, was that something that you targeted students specifically? And I don't believe you have grade four MCAS data in science, so-
No, this is just fifth grade.
Right, so you would need to, if you did that, you'd need to anticipate who those students might be. Or is that something that just sort of came out organically from your, all the additional support that you've been-
Well, I think it speaks to the beyond the bell programming. Again, that's a targeted group of students. It may be students who are currently low proficient or students in the needs improvement. So, a lot of our initiatives on Saturdays or after-school were targeted at students who fell within that range, needs improvement or low proficient. And again, it was just an extra opportunity to give a little booster shot to those who needed it. I do think that you raise a good point, that we have a lot of children who are ready for more enrichment and a lot of our resources, a lot of our resources have gone to students who do need that little bit of extra help, but I think teachers in the classroom right now are being very cognizant of those who may be in the high proficient and could get to advanced. So, a lot of that differentiation is happening within the classroom, but a lot of our targeted supports have gone to students in the needs improvement or low proficient range.
Perfect, excellent. And then, I'm going to, I decided I was going to take these in order, but I'm going to skip, sort of building on that, it's sort of more of a general comment, but if you advance to the S and P data in your literacy section.
Yes.
So, this graph, it's more of a general comment. I find personally, and I don't know about my other colleagues, I find this graph particularly helpful because you have multiple grade levels, so you can really see the, what you presume to be the progression of a Collicott student from grade one through grade three. Now, it's not exactly that because it's one academic year, the first graders, second graders, third graders, but you presumably could extrapolate. And you can really see your success there, driving up the percentage of students above the expected level and driving down the percentage of students below grade level. So, I find, I personally find this particularly helpful, almost more helpful than the year, the grade to grade MCAS comparison. So, thank you for including it and again, well done.
It almost got cut, so I-
Oh, really? Well-
It actually was my least favorite slide, but you're right, it does tell a story and the most important story of it all is that, you know, we have resources within the building and it's our responsibility, myself and the curriculum coordinators, to really decide the appropriate place for those resources and at different times of the year, they might spend more time in a class than others. So, this was really helpful in planning how to distribute resources this year.
And I think it's important to Dr. Donahue's point that when we meet with the principals and coordinators, the reading specialists are actually assigned buildings and grades based on this quarterly data. And so, you look at this data and you say, well, that talks about a grade to Dr. Donahue's point. Really, we look at every single child and when we look, we'll say, Kevin Donahue, in this quarter, how many, how many levels did Kevin Donahue excel? And if Kevin Donahue didn't excel one or two, three reading levels, what kind of supports are in place that that child is not moving ahead? So, these kinds of supports that the Milton Public Schools have funded and given the professional development to our teachers, it really does go across the spectrum so that we look at children who are academically excelling and we expect them to excel. And you're going to ask the question, why did that child, what are you doing for the gifted and talented in that class? Because we expect every child, every quarter, to raise grade levels. And to the point that these specialists actually look at the regression over the summer and will say, well, why didn't, Kevin Donahue didn't go to summer school? So, how many children went to summer school and did they not have regression? Then, this data is really invaluable.
Yeah, and it's, it's nice that you can, again, compare across grades and you could even take a slide like this and compare it to next year's slide like this and look at specific cohorts so you don't necessarily have to generalize, but I like this slide. So, thank you for leaving it. Let's see, and while we're on the, while we're on the subject of slides and comparisons, just my, my general comment that it's very helpful to compare us to the state, especially for PARC. I know none of the, or, we have a limited, we've had a limited amount of time with the data so far, but it will be helpful when we have a sort of larger macro discussion on our scores to compare ourselves to our peer districts as well, so we can, and again, it's the first year and it's a new test and there are a lot of caveats, but, you know, we should really get in the habit of comparing ourselves to our peer districts as well as the state. And I know that was probably not even feasible for this presentation, but congratulations to you again for your success with the PARC level because all of those caveats that I said, it makes it a difficult test to administer, especially for its first year.
And it's important to recognize that our children have the experiences they needed before the test to be successful on the test. So, there is a lot of controversy, there's a lot of talk about which test people should be taking. I think Milton made the best decision to pursue PARC testing. I think our children are capable. I think our children have the resources and they've had the experiences to succeed. You may see many other districts who have participated have gone down in their scores. They're okay.
Yeah.
And I honestly, I think it would be a step backward if we did anything differently and next year, when the state moves forward with the new test, although it may be called MCAS 2.0 or something along that line, it will look like the PARC assessment that we just took and it will be aggressive and children will need to synthesize information and our children will be able to do that.
Excellent. Just a few more and I'll finish up. A question about creative computing in the STEM strand. So, are they getting additional time to do that on top of their new science blocks or has that sort of been diffused into the existing?
I'm going to let our third grade English Innovation Pathway teacher talk a little bit about that and I want to commend Laura for taking risks and including Scratch and other new technology challenges within her classroom, not only taking the risk to do something that was uncomfortable, but then inviting parents in to see it. And I know that was a big thing for you, but Laura had an open house where families could come in and see the children coding and using Scratch and that is, that's what is making the difference. Teachers who are willing to take risks and to invite families to come in and get educated as well. So, I'll let Laura speak to that. I'll put it in here.
Okay. So, the creative computing, we call it Scratch, it's the name of the program, it is additional, it's an additional allotted amount of time with the FOS. So, we have a time where I teach from the FOS science. We're doing life cycles right now and then I have an additional minutes for the creative computing.
Good.
It's above-
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's great because, you know, as I'm sure you all know, you learn, you learn very well when you have sort of standalone lessons and then those, you can, when possible, integrate those into the rest of the curriculum. So, that's, that's good. And then my last comment, and I'll stop, was the thing I heard over and over and over again was professional development, that this was possible because of professional development, professional development, professional development. And I think that's, that's an excellent focus and I'm glad to hear such a positive response to it because anecdotally, it seems all too common that you don't feel like you get as much out of that as you could. And I hope that it continues to be as productive as it has been in the past and I hope that the teachers provide the administrators with that input and tell them, you know, this is working, this is not, this has been, this has been very successful and vice versa. You know, the administrators tell the teachers when they see it on their end. So, with that, thank you again. I appreciate the presentation. I'm done.
Great. I didn't mean it that way. I meant, great.
Not even just a little?
No, not a little.
Mr. Walker.
So, I would, I would open where Ms. Duffy closed when she said, keep doing what you're doing. And I would say to all of you, including Ms. Duffy, keep doing what you're doing. It's obvious that the collective focus and the collective work that you've been able to accomplish here is what's made the difference. So, the parents, the teachers, the staff, I'm glad you complimented Ms. Sheen for the, what she left you and Jonathan Redden for the teamwork that you have there. This is, as you know, I mean, you're, you've been a star and you continue to be one, we knew that even before you were in this role, so that's no surprise to me at least. But the reason that we're so successful is the level of teamwork at every level. It just continues- So, that's no surprise to me at least. But the, the reason that we're so successful is the level of teamwork at every level. It just continues to make me proud. So, what I'd say is, "Keep doing what you're doing." I do have a few questions, including on the slide that you didn't like. So, let's get to the questions. The first one is, Ms. McBride mentioned the transitional PPI and CPI data. Is that available, including the formula?
Sure that I can realize. So, I believe we embargo, I believe it's no longer embargoed as of last week or two weeks ago. So, it is, if you go, it has been updated on the district and school profiles on the department website.
Can you arrange to get that to me?
I can arrange to get that to you, no problem. That, absolutely. I am hoping, and I can get a good answer. I know a good data specialist that can help me to hopefully walk through, or help me, because I sometimes need it in layman's terms.
If Ms. McBride would agree and we would bring VIVU and do a presentation for the whole school committee and the community, it would be valuable if I could work with your RODJOW schedule.
Okay.
Send it to Mr. Walker.
That'd be great. I'd like to see it before that.
But then have the, we, we have the, just last week, we sent the POC data out. This is a presentation later, very briefly. And we're going to speak to the accountability levels, and then we'll give a presentation.
Great. The next was on the improved literacy outcome slide. So, again, Ms. McBride or Ms. Concanon, can you talk a little bit more about comparing and contrasting how MCAS is reported and how Park is reported?
I'm gonna let Lauren. So, MCAS, when MCAS came through, MCAS was, had the, you were, students were scored on a warning, needs improvement, proficient, advanced level. With the Park scores, it's now on a level one to five. Whereas, levels one, two, and three line up and match with the needs improvement warning. And then, levels four and five match up with the proficient and advanced. So, how they deliver the, their results is based on meeting expectations. So, if you're a level one, you have not yet met expectations. Level two and three, you close that gap in meeting, and having not yet, again, or not yet met expectations. And then, levels four is when you met expectations, and level five is exceeding expectations. So, it's really all around, I guess, sort of growth mindset verbiage. But it does match up where they say that level five is more warning. And then, the needs improvement is really level two, three. So, and then, three, or four matches up to proficient and five matches up to exceeding. Advanced, yes. Sorry, long-winded.
Okay.
I also wanted those comments because many of the parents just received the POC reports that the reporting is so much more inclusive than what you received as an MCAS score. So, now, it's very easy to identify gaps for each child and also places where a child exceeds. So, you know, literature is broken down into five subcategories now. So, you have a lot more information about a child than in the MCAS reporting.
Good. And on the fall F and P levels? So, I agree with Dr. Donahue on a few counts. One, I think this is an extraordinary success story. So, I, I think it is very good information, and it's good to include. The, the one question I have is that I would have thought that the two percent, that's not really percent. Is it grade levels below? What is that?
So, we have grade one, grade two, and grade three. We have percentages in each category, and then, in parentheses, is the number of students.
But the, the, the definition suggests it's, it's not two percent below a grade level, is it?
Two below.
Two levels.
Two grade levels below.
Yes.
Two levels below.
It's benchmarks. It's a percentage.
Two, right, we should take out the percent. So, it's two levels below.
So, given that, I would have thought that, and I understand these are separate cohorts. But I would have thought that the grade two cohort would have benefited from the early literacy work that they got in grade one. So, I would expect the trend to be going continually downward instead of increasing in grade two and then going down dramatically in grade three.
Which is one of the reasons why I wanted to leave this slide out, because we were, we were a little disappointed with the way the slides look. However, I am very confident that that blue band will grow. And this was data in the fall. If we, we will have more data like this in January, and I expect it to look much different. Again, the amount of children who may have regressed over the summer, this was right when children got back. I don't think it's a true indication of how our grade two students are reading at this time, but it was unfortunate.
So, you think it's probably regression over the summer?
I think that plays a factor. I think there are a few factors in this particular grade. Again, one of the reasons why I wanted to leave this slide off, but something I'd love to talk about with you off camera.
Okay. Done.
And if we might, before we leave that slide, we have two things to say.
Well, just, just for clarification, the, we're talking about benchmarks here rather than grade levels. So, these, so there are benchmarks that are set for, for each grade. So, the students, when they're given their Fountas and Pennell benchmark assessment, we're not talking about being below grade level necessarily. Sometimes, being below benchmark does mean below grade level. But this is two, two points below the benchmark rather than grade level. So, if we're, even if we're looking at two cohorts that look similar, where we would hope to see an increase in students above benchmark or at benchmark, we have different benchmarks at each grade level. So, they have to work a little harder to achieve those benchmarks that are set at the beginning of the year. So, we do take into account regression of skills over the summer months. But they are, I did want to clarify that it was benchmarks versus grade level.
But Mr. Walker is very attuned to our goal for all children is reading at grade level at the end of grade three. And so, you should, the public should also know that these are children who are in the English Pathways, STEM Pathways program. Now, the grade three data, did you include the children who are in the French immersion?
In this particular slide, no. What we've learned is-
Going forward to have the French immersion comparable data in one and two, and then to have all of the children in grade three.
We will have that in January. What we've learned is that if you assess third grade French students too early in the year, you have data that doesn't truly match exactly what's happening.
But we do assess them.
We do assess them. Using this particular assessment, the Fountas and Pennell, in January, we will have comparable data for all students.
But there's, we could have put up comparable, Madame spoke to the assessments that she gives in grades one and two. So, that might be valuable in future presentations to, because in the French immersion program, they've created comparable internal assessments.
So, we actually, thank you to VIVU, have that data available already. She's set up amazing Google collection form for all of our students. So, in every single school across the district, we have a shared file, a shared district file where we put in scores of all students. So, we have common expectation. So, we do currently have data like that available. We just don't have it included in this presentation.
We might send it to the school committee for French one and two, and then, when our third grade French data becomes available.
So, in closing, I know full well how difficult it is not only to attain level one status, but to sustain it. So, congratulations.
So, it sounds like that slide is just growing in breadth and importance and maybe with you for a long time.
Are you gonna ask a question about it? Because she likes to talk about it.
No, no, no. My, I'm not gonna ask a question about it. My only impression, my, my primary perception and impression of Collicott comes from a preschooler at Collicott who is a very, very proud matriculant of Collicott School, such that it will be a real challenge next year for Principal Redden to convince this preschooler that Cunningham matches Collicott. What's that? So, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next, I'm going to ask our pupil personnel director, Tracy Grandow, to join us at the table. At the last meeting, briefly, and for the viewing public who's watching. In the world of public education, we have students in specialized programs based on their individual educational plans. And as a result of the school building project and the commitment of the school committee, prior school committees, and the town, we have built special ed programs in the district so that students don't have to travel to out-of-district placements. And these out-of-district placements take children out of their communities, requires transportation. And to a family that I've worked with in my career, families want their children to go. Mr. Zul has just actually talked about two schools that are connected to their neighborhood schools. And so, in the world of special education, you have out-of-district placements, and you also have collaborative placements. Collaboratives are when school systems geographically join together, and they create programming for students who, programming isn't created within their district. Sometimes, it's even specialized testing that might not, we might not have somebody on staff who can provide the testing that an individual educational plan requires. And so, for many years, Milton Public Schools have belonged to the Charms Collaborative. Canton, Holbrook, Avon, Randolph, Milton, Stoughton, and Sharon. Randolph withdrew from the Charms Collaborative. And we have belonged to the Charms Collaborative. And over the past years, the number of Milton Public School students involved in the Charms Collaborative has decreased because of our programming and the selection of families to attend other collaboratives or other out-of-district placements. And so, we found ourselves having our students placed at the South Shore Collaborative Programming, meeting the needs, complementing, this is like a quiz, complementing programs that we wouldn't have within our district. And so, we've given this a lot of thought. We've been a supporter, to the point that when I was the principal of Cunningham, one of the Charms Collaborative programs was housed at the Cunningham School for 10 years. So, children from all over the geographical area, beyond just the communities that were involved, tuitioned their children into that program. So, I have sent you a piece prepared by Tracy Grandow, given to me, and I forwarded to you. And I'm asking you tonight to vote to withdraw from the Charms Collaborative. And we're actively becoming involved in making application to the South Shore Collaborative on the recommendation of our pupil personnel director, who was good enough to join us tonight in case you had any detailed questions.
So, why don't we open it up just to see if there are any questions before we entertain a motion? If there's any, if there are any broader questions? Seeing none, I'll, I'll make the motion. So, I'll move to withdraw the Milton Public Schools from the Charms Collaborative at the end of the 2015, 2016 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And we'll just, we'll just hang on for just a minute so we get full participation on this. We have a motion that's been made and seconded. I didn't, I wanted to, it wasn't extensive conversation beyond that, but we want to take the time to certainly deliberate. So, the motion to withdraw the Milton Public Schools from the Charms Collaborative at the end of the 2015, 2016 school year has been made and seconded. Ms. Grandow is here to answer any questions, any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. I would just point out that I want to, I want to thank Ms. Grandow for, for showing up and for waiting nearly two hours on this presentation. And without, without stepping outside the chain of command, it seems to me that it's only reflective of the efforts that, that Ms. Grandow's been making in her, in her position since she's had it over the last nine months or so. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it, sorry. Next time, we won't make you wait so long, I promise. You'll be first on the agenda next time. Is there anything you want to say or ask us? You don't have to.
I'm just privileged to be working with Milton Public Schools, which I feel is the best school in the world.
She's going to actually stay for your budget item?
On that note, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Walker.
She's also here in the event that we have any questions. We have an amendment to the budget vote that we took last week, which involves some sped costs. So, she's also here for that. So, on that note, if we could move that up as high as possible on the agenda.
Well, if, if there's no objection, we can take it right now. If, if there's any objection?
That would be fair.
Yeah? Without objection, we'll move, it's, is it item 7A, Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Okay. Without objection, we'll move item 7A from the Finance Subcommittee report to right now.
Excellent.
And let's all-
So, just by way of introduction, and it, it came to our attention that the budget that we voted that we entitled contractual and legal obligations and mandated cost, which was previously voted, there are certain sped costs that we will need to incur. And these are also mandated costs related to an additional classroom that we'll need to create. So, looks like we have some slides that articulate that in some detail.
So, very briefly, we have a partnership with the New England Center for Children, NECC, whose services are children who are on the autism spectrum. They give services for these children. They give consultation to us. They have a curriculum for these children. They have assessment tools for these children. They train our, our aides and teachers in dealing with these children. We've had a partnership with them since 2009. Prior to that, these children would have been placed in out-of-district placement at NECC. But when we had, once the buildings opened up and we had more space for special education classrooms, and we had a sufficient quantity of children, we actually opened a partnership with NECC where they provided a teacher, they provided the, all the consultation. We provided aides, and they came in and staffed a class for us on our site as opposed to our sending the children out of district. As the number of children grew, we found we needed a second class, and we opened what's called the Partners Program, where instead of having NECC come in and bring their own teacher and supervise the program, we used our staff, we used our teacher and our aides, and NECC supervised it. They provided the curriculum and the assessment tools and the training for our aides and so forth. So, currently, we have two classes. We have what we call the NECC class, which is basically the original contracted class with N E C C, which services our children in grades two through five. And we have this Partners class, which, again, is our teacher and, but again, under consultation and supervision of the NECC staff. So, we, you see here a quick recap of it. In these classes, you need as many adults as you have children. So, if you have five children in the class, you need a teacher and four aides or some combination where you have as many adults as you have children. So, here, we have, you know, our current NECC class, grades two through five, has six students, teacher, paraprofessionals, and so forth. Our current Partners class, which is grades K and one, has five students. Again, one of our teachers under the supervision of N E C C and our paraprofessionals and so forth. What has occurred, and Ms. Grandow was here to speak about this, if, if you're interested and have questions, is as we assess students who are coming into the district, we inherit students as early as three years old if they're on individual education programs. And so, as we go through the testing, we look at places for them as they rise into kindergarten. And what we have is that in addition to the students we currently have, we- And what we have is that in addition to the students we currently have, we have six rising kindergarteners who will be eligible for this program, which is a huge number for one year. Four of our current, four of the five current students in the Partners Program, the K1 program, are in fact kindergarten students, and so will remain in it for another year. And so, this gives us 10 children in the Partners Program, which is too large for that program. We're limited to seven in the program. So, the four students we are retaining in that program, the six we are receiving, means we need another class. And what we've been looking at over the last few days is whether it makes financial sense to contract with NECC to provide a NECC-style class, or whether to continue with our Partners model, where we provide the teacher and work in collaboration with them. We have decided on the latter. And so, to create a new Partners class, we'll need a couple of pieces. We'll have an annual contract with NECC to supervise and provide the assessment, the professional development for the teachers, and so forth. Their contract, we will have to negotiate, but it depends on the number of students and so forth, but based on prior negotiations, we feel the contract will be somewhere in the range of $55,000 for the year for them to oversee the additional class. We will need a teacher. As I say, we'll need five paraprofessionals for six students, but we believe that current staffing and the changes in the needs for current staffing as they roll into next year will allow us to reposition three of our current aides into this program. So, in fact, we'll only need two new aides beyond the staffing that we have currently. And these pieces together, as we estimate here, would have a cost of $177,800. So, this is what the administration has recommended to the Finance Subcommittee that we proceed. We are going to have to do this. I mean, these children have legal entitlement to these services. We have a legal obligation to provide it. And so, one way or the other, we have to service them. Were we to send these children out of district, they could easily be $100,000 apiece placements. It's, you know, continuing our policy of trying to retain as many children in district, this is the right thing to do, you're keeping them in the community. It's also a highly cost-effective thing to do, to keep them within the system. And so, this having come up since your vote on the budget, we've put it to the Finance Subcommittee to recommend that you amend your contracts and legal obligations, base, rollover, budget, whatever you want to call it, to include this amount of money, $177,800. So, that's the forming version.
So, we can have, and Ms. Grandau will take questions if there are any, but procedurally, I would move that we rescind our vote at our previous meeting for a legal and contractual obligations budget, commonly referred to as the rollover budget of $42,436,500.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. So, that vote has been rescinded.
Then I would move that we approve a budget, based on this information just being provided, of $42,614,300.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? So, just to put a point on it, the budget that we just rescinded was a budget, the bare-bones budget, that was $1,689,000 above last year's budget, or this current year's budget, rather. And this would be adding $177,800 to that, which would make it, by my calculation, $1,866,800 above last year's budget. And just so I understand it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, my only other question is, Glenn, you suggested that if we didn't do this, and we had to place these six additional students, that it could be up to $100,000 apiece, which, by my calculation, would be about $600,000, as opposed to $177,800, which is about three times the cost. Is that?
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. So, this seems to be quite the good thing to do. And I assume Finance Subcommittee has voted a recommendation on this?
I don't think we voted it.
Okay.
We didn't vote.
Okay.
We are confident it is the right thing to do.
Okay.
So, it's fiscally responsible, but as I explained at the beginning, parents are choosing these programs. Parents have a choice, and they go in, they visit out-of-district collaborative and out-of-district placements, and it's the right thing to do. And we have, we've kept Holly Concanon here tonight, and Tracy Grandau. We could have built these programs, and they weren't comparable to traveling to Southfield? Southfield? Southborough. And so, to the teachers and all the professionals that work to build these programs. And we've talked about the booming preschool, going from years ago, one class in the Milton Public Schools, to now this will be a sixth class of preschool. It is the right thing, fiscally responsible, but beyond that, it is morally and educationally the right thing to do for these children.
Ms. Padere.
Yeah, I would just second that, and, you know, students that can participate in our schools fully, instead of having to be, you know, bussed out to other locations, not to say that, not to mention that this program in total, and Mr. Pavlichek would probably do this math in about five seconds, for my calculations, saves us about a million a year if you look at every student in the program. So, it seems like we have this great program, and, you know, we need to add a class, but it's fiscally the right thing to do, and absolutely the right thing to do, to include these students fully in our educational system, so.
Ms. Vrill.
And I just wanted to reiterate for any viewers at home tonight, or people who watch it on the weekends, on the rebroadcast, that this, again, is another example of the school budget, where, you know, with incoming students every year, we don't always know what we're going to get, and we are required to meet the needs of these students, and so that it's going to cost more money. But, again, what's been presented here is that we, as a school committee, you as an administration, are deciding, well, what is the best cost-containment process that's also going to give the students the best experience? And this proposal is that. And, again, both to what Mr. Zul has said and Ms. Padere has said, again, if people are watching at home, that if we don't do this, it's going to cost us a whole heck of a lot more money. So, these are some of the things, if people are watching, and they watch the school budget, these are the issues that we are dressed with, that we have to deal with. We can't turn students away because they're too costly. And I commend the fact that we're doing the best we can for the student, and the best fiscal assessment and decision for the town. So, just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Dr. Pavlichek.
Just so Ms. Grandau gets to say something. Maybe you could say something about, we do have students who are diagnosed at a much earlier age than has been in the past. It's a trend to look for some of these things, but could you speak a little bit about the effectiveness of doing this at the early ages, and where it leads as these children age?
So, being the team chair of the high school previously, I see the end results of this program, and we found that early intensive services from a young age really helps the student in terms of their growth, in terms of, towards the movement for full inclusion, in terms of being independent, and being just the best that they can be when they reach the high school. I've seen a lot of success stories come out of the middle school and the high school.
So, we can presume and hope that this will also help us with our achievement gaps as well?
It will, it certainly will contribute to learning and literacy and mathematics and the achievement gap. And by providing these specialized services and very detailed specialized instruction that you might not find in other districts, in other places, it benefits the students greatly later on.
Thank you, Tracy. Anything else? Mr. Walker.
I would just close with, and while we have Ms. Grandau here, you've only been in this role a few months, but I have to say, the reviews that I've gotten from every quarter have been outstanding. Everyone says, this is the CPAC, principals, parents, everyone says the difference is dramatic, and they couldn't be more pleased with how inclusive your style is, and how cooperative you are in working with them. So, I thought it'd be important for you to know that.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Tracy. I think that's your last item on the agenda. I hope it is.
Ms. Grandau and Ms. Concanon, abstain.
And we'll go back to the superintendent's report. I think we're up to item D.
It'll be very brief. On the PACC results update, Mr. Walker had spoken to, when the levels and the data was embargoed, I contacted you about the levels of the school. I've given you a copy of a letter that I received at the end of November, that notes that Milton High School has moved to a Level 1, Colley, Cott remained at a Level 1, and Cunningham, Glover, Tucker, and Pierce are Level 2. We'll do a presentation talking about the calibration between MCAS and PACC for you after the first of the year. Ms. Padere called, and in two email blasts, we've detailed this PACC information, but I want to tell you, from DESI, I receive daily updates with questions from superintendents who are supposed to understand every aspect of PACC and MCAS. So, Ms. Padere asked, and we prepared today another update that we'll send out to parents and put on the front of our webpage, so that parents know, I had a third grader last year. What test did my third grader take? I had a fifth grader last year. What results? Because they, the parents of children who were in the fifth, eighth, and nine or 10 last year, received science MCAS, and now they're receiving PACC. And so, we hope that this briefer outline, and we corresponded with Ms. Padere today, and she thought it communicated the message, but we'll put that out tomorrow to all parents, and do a presentation for you after the first of the year. And to Ms. Concanon's message, we'll show you the new parent reports, student reports, that were sent to parents, and how, again, the DESI is working to communicate more information to parents. And very briefly, in happenings, tonight at Pierce Middle School, there was a winter arts festival. We're asking parents and guardians to check their school calendars, but I'd like you to circle what, for many people, are the two biggest nights of the entire year for them. One, Mr. Donahue is the person who, or Mr. Zul has gone recently, kindergarten information night, January 21st, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Milton High School Auditorium. I call it one of my three favorite nights of the entire year. We meet the parents and guardians of the incoming kindergarten students, and you always think, parents and guardians who have siblings in the school district, know and understand, and they show up, and they're just as excited and anxious and want the information. And this, we're adding this year, that just shows and supports my explanation to you about a growing preschool. We're going to have a preschool information night on a different evening, January 14th, 2016, at 6:30 in the Milton High School Auditorium. Everybody, every question will be answered, and we'll anticipate somebody asking a question that we haven't included in our presentation. Those, we'll communicate far and wide, those two dates. All parents and guardians are invited, and then we'll post those presentations and keep a Q and A, running Q and A up on our website. And our next school committee meeting is January 6th. Thank you very much, Jim and Zul.
Thank you very much. Very briefly, item 5, Chair's Report. First, long-range planning committee update. We're at the stage, after approving the charge, that the chair needs to prepare a nomination package, laying out the number of proposed members and some proposed names. And the administration has provided some proposed members. I've had discussions with Dr. Donahue about numbers and names, and I think we'll be in a position to have a proposed nomination package to the committee before the January 6th meeting, so we can have a discussion of that at that time. And then, second, on the item that we added, the warrant committee update, we will be meeting, or the warrant committee will be meeting here, in this space tomorrow night, and the school committee has been invited, and the administration, to that meeting to make a presentation, an initial presentation about the school committee budget. And this is a preliminary, get-to-know-you, get-to-know-budget, school budget presentation. And so, we will be here, some of us will be here for some of all, some of all of that meeting tomorrow night. So, we'll all look forward to that. The time is 7:30. Ms. Vrill.
Can I ask, is that, so it starts at 7:30, and is it just our committee and warrant, or are there other departments there as well?
Just the school committee. It's devoted to the school committee laying out the basics of the school budget, and the administration has prepared, as they normally do, a book, a budget book, to circulate to the members of the warrant committee, and to just review that with them, and to provide a background into a lot of the areas, so that the warrant committee can start understanding what is a 42, roughly $42 million budget, by far the largest budget that they will have to review and make a recommendation on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, that is the end of the abbreviated Chair's Report, and now we'll move on to item 6, the Facility Subcommittee Report.
So, the Facility Subcommittee has met three times this year, but a little history would be appropriate. We have the benefit of first-class educational facilities because of the work that what was formerly the School Building Committee did. That was led for many years by Charlie Winchester, may he rest in peace, and then subsequently by Tony Chikello, and various other members, including Dr. Pavlichek and former school committee member Lynda Lee Sheridan. Based on the facilities that they gave us, the charge to the Facility Subcommittee, which was created more than 10 years ago by the school committee, was to create a comprehensive facilities management plan. So, in our three meetings this year, we focused on how we can accomplish that goal. And the document you have before you recommends that you authorize the Facility Subcommittee to issue an RFP, asking for proposals to create a 20-year facilities management plan for the schools. Just briefly, that would include a number of key activities. In 2012, the town did a condition assessment of all of the town facilities, including the schools. So, we would ask that for the school buildings, that be updated. Prepare life cycle and replacement cost analyses, including maintenance schedules and cost information for all the major building systems. Review our compliance with state educational standards as it relates to facilities. Perform indoor and outdoor safety assessments, addressing air quality, hazardous waste, and other appropriate considerations. Identify, for the first five years, what the facilities management and capital improvement priorities should be for the Milton Public School District. Identify any critical staff training needs related to successful achievement of the facility management plan objectives. And as I mentioned, develop four or five-year action plans. We believe that this is critical for us to, and as you've heard the superintendent say many times, we have the responsibility for maintaining these assets that we've been given. And if you want the sobering statistics... And if you want the sobering statistic, we're responsible for approximately 680,000 square feet of space. So our job is to make sure that we secure the first-rate status of these assets for the next 20 years. So Bill Ritchie, who's our Director of Consolidated Facilities and including, including being a Facility Subcommittee Member, has estimated that based on current market costs, this would cost us approximately $80,000. And after consultation with Dr. Pavlichek, I believe we can fund this out of our facilities revolving fund. And I can't think of a more appropriate use of facilities revolving fund dollars than to secure a 20-year facilities management plan. So with that, I would move that you authorize the Facility Subcommittee to issue an RFP on behalf of the school committee and to seek proposals to complete this task.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Could I just ask, either Mr. Walker or Dr. Pavlichek, do we know how much money we currently have in the facilities revolving fund? Approximately?
There are actually two facilities revolving funds. One from rental of the Copeland Field House and Brooksfield, and one from rental of all other facilities. Between the two of them, we have just under $300,000 in those accounts. Roughly half in each. The Copeland account is building a balance for the future renovations of Brooksfield as they come in and so forth, but the facilities rental account, the Chapter 71 facilities rental account for rental of other facilities, has sufficient balance in it to cover this.
So there wouldn't be, this wouldn't be a request for any general fund? Any general, any money from the general fund?
No.
Okay. Ms. Padere.
Just so, Dr. Pavlichek, what do we generally use that money for? For repairs or upkeep?
It's repairs and upkeep when we, when we had to have, for instance, the playing surface in the fieldhouse redone, we do it through there. When we've had to make repairs to the auditorium, we pay for it through those funds. It really supplements our maintenance budget. We try to keep a, you know, a running balance. We try not to spend it down. You know, we build a little up reserves in the Copeland for, you know, further, for future major expenses, or partially fund future major expenses. But for the most part, it covers the maintenance of the buildings in addition to the amount that's appropriated through the general fund. It really supplements it. And it's based on the fact that the more you rent these facilities out, of course, the more wear and tear they accrue. And so, it's reasonable to spend the money from those rentals on just the maintenance of the buildings.
So that $80,000 won't delay any repairs or maintenance that we need to make this year? That's what my main question would be.
Not that I'm aware of at the moment.
Ms. Varela.
With regard to that account, and moving forward in the soon-to-be-future, with regard to needing temporary expansion space, and I know that, Mr. Walker, you've said that you, the subcommittee's working on a couple of different alternatives, would we ever need to pay and rent that out, though? And would any of that money service that? Or is that?
Pay and rent out?
Like if we used temporary space at, I don't know, I'm just throwing out, like maybe at Kyrie College or another facility in town for any early ed if the space was needed, would we have to pay for that? And would that account be someplace we would draw from?
We couldn't draw from that account to do that.
You couldn't? Okay.
Facilities rental, when you charge rentals or when you charge any fee for any particular activity, we are constrained to use that revenue only for in-kind expenses.
Okay.
So when we rent out the facilities, we can charge off a certain amount of custodial cost that's incurred by cleaning the facilities. We can charge off repairs. We can charge off maintenance. We couldn't turn around and use that for some other purpose, like buying textbooks or renting space.
Even though it's a facility issue of space, it still couldn't be used to that? Be a stretch?
It'd be a bit of a stretch.
Okay.
And with regard to the first part of your question, I would hope that the entity might donate the space.
I agree.
But if not, then we would have to pay for it. But as Dr. Pavlichek could say, we couldn't pay for it out of there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Genanamous. So I think we've segued right into the Finance Subcommittee Report.
Yes, I think we have. And the only thing we have left is vendor warrants. Dr. Pavlichek, do we have a warrant?
We have one and one that you signed last week, so I actually have two.
Okay. Number, first number?
Last week's was number 24, dated December 10th, and the amount was $549,899.04. This week's is number 25, dated December 17th, and it's in the amount of $480,955.79.
Move approval of warrant number 24, dated December 10th, in the amount of $549,899.04.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, can you move number 25 and abstain?
Well, before we move 25, I haven't had the opportunity to take a look at that, and so I would probably abstain on that or see whether we could wait until the next meeting if, unless.
That would be great.
Unless enough members have already, unless enough members want to move forward anyway, but if they don't, if it's okay if we could do it January 6th, I don't know if the calendar...
I will need one more signature tonight.
That's fine. But in terms of approval, and I may well be that signature if I have a chance to look through it, but if there's no objection, I would ask to wait until the next meeting on that.
One other piece of business with the holidays coming up and with the change at Town Hall in the payroll system that's coming on January 1st to bi-weekly payroll and so forth, we are preparing one, they've asked us at the Town Hall to prepare one more warrant before the holidays. It will be done on Friday, so I will be harassing you at the beginning of next week to possibly come in and sign a warrant on either Monday, Tuesday.
This is a payroll warrant or a vendor warrant?
Another vendor warrant. So we will need to gather signatures and involve my running around to your houses or something like this, but I will need four signatures sometime early next week. So this is a whole warning.
Good luck to you on that.
Miss Varela.
All right. If there's nothing further from Finance, I don't believe there's any old business. Next meeting, agenda items. Anything on that? Seeing none, we'll move, oh, sorry.
We'll be having a Finance Subcommittee, and I believe Policy.
Yeah, Policy.
And Transportation.
I'm going to ask, we do Transportation at the second January meeting because we were unable to meet during the holidays because of conflicting schedules with everyone there, so we should be able to meet that first week back, and then I'll have a report the second one. Okay?
Great.
And obviously, Mr. Chair, it'll be your decision if by chance you've heard from the Warrant Committee with more detailed information about revenues and expenditures. If they've finalized the spreadsheet, then we might have the impact to the budget, which will require us to vote reduction scenarios, but this process is moving much more slowly than in previous years, so.
On the 6th, you mean?
Yes, and maybe we'll be ready, maybe we won't.
Okay. All right. We'll keep an eye on that because, and we may adjust the agenda if that's required because that obviously takes a little more time. All right. Citizen speak. I don't think we have anyone unless Tracy wants to come up and say. So now, we're going to move to executive session, so I'll move to move to adjourn for the purpose of going, moving to executive session, not to return to public session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining negotiations with MEA, the discussion of which an open session could have a detrimental effect on the district's bargaining position, and for the approval of minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and roll call vote. Ms. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Zulishess, Ms. Padere.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Dr. Donahue.
Yes.
We are adjourned, and we will see you on, well, we'll see you tomorrow, but we'll see you next at the school committee after the new year on January 6th. Thank you very much.